Oh, the battery.
I can go look.
Oh, nine volt.
Yeah, I guess so. A nine volt?
Nine volt.
Just one?
Just one.
Oh, this is probably yours, right? Oh, no.
I have some batteries.
See, I don't usually get one. I have it in my packet. I bet you.
No charge.
I'm gonna have it on here.
Great.
Oh, okay.
Great.
It's because.
Luckily, there's the.
Oh, you have the privacy thing, though. In Harris, we got a new table at City Congress. I can't live with old man legs anymore.
We don't need a Sharon Stone moment.
Okay, okay.
I call the Patton Township Board of Supervisors meeting on October the 16th, 2024, at 5:32 to order. We welcome all especially new Patton Township residents to the Patton Township community a place for all. As you are able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Next on the agenda are announcements. The Jewish holiday of Yom Kippur was celebrated October 11th and 12th. And residents, you can find more information on Yom Kippur here on our website. Next is the Hindu festival of Diwali. It's a role of life. And it's also known as Diwali. We celebrate on October 31st. Residents also can find more information here on our website. And the Indigenous Peoples' Day was celebrated on October 14th. Residents also can find more information here on our website. Next on the agenda is the additions to a posted agenda. Are there any additional items we need to put on our agenda?
No.
All righty. Then, moving on. First, on presentations and public hearing, our.
Oh, public comments.
Yep, I'm moving fast here. Okay, public comments.
I'm sorry.
Right, Ted. Public comments, residents and taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest of the township. Comments related to a specific agenda item should be deferred until that point in the meeting. If you are attending on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature of the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Are there any public comments at this time?
I don't see any.
Uh, I'd like to speak. I'm sorry.
Fedora, go ahead, Fedora.
Yes, I'm sorry. Um, it seems like the raised hand feature is disabled for whatever reason, but um, so, good evening. Is everyone able to hear me clearly?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Ted. I live over here in Park Forest Village in Patton Township. I wanted, I, I, I wanted to bring up a public safety issue with the board today. So, many times I've, I've watched throughout places in our community, and I've risked slipping on the road markings, including those that were meant for people to walk on. And, you know, sometimes you have inclement weather and sometimes it's dark and you, you have to be careful, you know? You can, you can slip on those things and, you know, you'll hit your head and nobody will see you, you know? So, I wanted the township and the planning's, the planning office's consideration perhaps in mandating that road markings be, that anti-slip paint be used on road markings, coarse paint in pedestrianized areas. And hopefully throughout the township and community, so people could be provided a safe, so people could have safe walking surfaces so they could travel throughout communities and businesses.
Ted.
I.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ted, do you know where in Park Forest? Because the line painting that's put down for those markings has glass in it, so we can actually go out and sweep that material, which will then take away the slippery factor, it should take away the slippery factor on the crossings. So if you want to just actually just shoot me an email and let me know what roads you think are impacted, we'd be happy to take a look at that.
Yes, okay. It, it just, it, it might be, I, I've just noticed it more in private businesses, so I don't know if it's, if, if it's the appropriate jurisdiction, but I, I could try to email you anyway.
Yeah, that would be great. If it's any of our public streets, we can definitely do something about it.
Okay, okay. But yes, I just, you know, I did want to remind the board that the nearest critical care trauma center is over 45 minutes away from the municipal building in Altoona. And that hospital's capacity itself is currently being downgraded. So I hope none of us have to experience a, a serious accident here, especially in a mountainous terrain where we'll have to depend on air travel for our injuries. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ted. And we have made notations on that. Next on the agenda is presentations and public hearing, Global Dignity Day. Amy?
So, Global Dignity Day is a celebration of unity and the belief that everyone deserves to live a life of dignity. First observed in 2008, Global Dignity Day is held on the third Wednesday in October in more than 80 countries. It was founded by Crown Prince Haakon of Norway, entrepreneur John Bryant, CEO and founder of Operation Hope, and professor Pekka Himannen, author and philosopher.
And Betsy, would you like to?
I'll note that Dignity Day was celebrated today here in State College at the Penn Stater with a half-day-long conference. What is dignity? Dignity means that we all matter equally. Dignity is a feeling in your core, a belief in your own worth, a belief in the worth of others. With dignity, we lead lives of hope, optimism, and compassion guided by a universal ethical compass. Dignity is the belief that our basic humanity is shared with every other person on this planet. Everyone is encouraged to take the dignity pledge. And I'll go ahead and read that. This is the, the pledge. You're welcome to join in, I guess, if those who have it in front of them. I pledge to join with others to create a world where compassion, understanding, and love triumphs over intolerance, injustice, and inequality. I pledge to be kind and open-minded, honoring the unique gifts and values of others.
Thank you, Betsy. Also to note, Susan and myself attended. Was a outstanding event for all of us. Very educational and very unified in what dignity is. So I want to thank the organizations, State College that put it together also. All of the speakers were outstanding. So, we thank you all for that. Next on the agenda is a proposed 2025 COG budget. Amy, I want to.
So, we have with us tonight COG Executive Director Ben Estelle and Finance Director Kimberly McMullin to answer any questions you may have on the proposed 2025 COG budget. We did include in the digital version of the packet the summary budget and also a link to the September 19th Finance Committee meeting, which was the wrap-up session for the Finance Committee. Our comments are due back to the COG by October 24th, so I will take note of any comments that we make this evening and then forward them on. So, Ben, if you want to come on up.
Thank you, everyone. I appreciate you having us on your agenda this evening for consideration of the 2020, 2025 COG budget. As this is only, I believe, week eight for me, I don't exactly know how this used to be done, however, what we have been doing is covering just a couple overall points that we want to make clear to each of our partner communities and then take questions. As was noted, there are more than eight hours of budget hearing videos available on CNET, so if you really want to get into the weeds on this, you can go line by line through all of those videos. The last video certainly is the most important when most of the decisions were made by the Finance Committee for that. The first topic I'd like to start with is that we are looking at a, an overall 5.64% increase in the overall COG budget. This is both above and below our target threshold. The original target threshold was lower than this number, however, when you applied the, the new rate for health insurance increase into that formula, it grew above the 5.64. So using that formula with the adjustment for healthcare shows that we came in under the number that was provided to us by the Finance Committee. However, one of the most important points we are making sure everyone understands is that this budget uses extensive fund balance to keep, keep the increase as low as possible for this year. That will lead to higher increases next year. There are some places where we use fund balance that will not, will not affect future budgets. There are areas that it does affect future budgets. For instance, the Finance Staff did a great job of unwinding fund balances, particularly in the parks area where there had been a number of years where the same pieces of equipment were added to the budget multiple times because of delays during, through the COVID era of manufacturing. And it was not caught that the same vehicles were being listed and our municipal partners provided funds for those multiple times. Some of those funds are what are being proposed to be used to help offset the cost of the Hessfield bathrooms. Those are not, that is not a use of fund balance that will affect us in the future. On the other hand, the COG administration budget uses the complete fund balance of approximately $92,000 to balance that. Those are not one-time expenses, those are annual expenses, and therefore, that $92,000 will be added on to the total for 2026, as well as any percentage increases due to inflation, rising costs for personnel through there. We are working on fund balance policies for across the board with all of our, all of our funds, and we will likely be adding an additional fund through there where we separate out regional planning and local planning from one another. That way, there is no confusion and no insinuations that regional planning communities are paying for local planning activities, which only takes a couple of communities into account. One of the other changes that will be coming is that we will start doing a five-year outlook on future budgets. There's certainly not enough time for us to do that once, after I got here, but it is my preference to budget at least five years. When you make a large-scale decision like Whitehall Park, you often see the upfront costs for those facilities, which you're not necessarily seeing the long-term costs that come with those. New facilities like that require new operations and upkeep, and those are not being accounted for when you only look one year at a time. The question almost always comes up, what about 10 years and 15 years? Because these things certainly cost more money as you go down the road, and that is true. However, experience shows that as soon as you get past the five-year mark, then your numbers start to get wildly different from your projections. And so, it becomes less worthwhile to spend the time trying to budget that far out in advance. The example I typically use is if the last fire truck I ordered for my last community, which I ordered, I think, in '22, will be there sometime in 2026. And I believe it was $608,000 for a new fire engine. The truck now sells for over a million dollars. Thankfully, we were able to lock the price, and we were the last ones to get a price lock on it. But that is the kind of price differences that we can deal with in just a few years' time. Certainly, there have been a number of circumstances in the last few years that caused that to a more extreme level, but it happens on a regular basis when you go more than a five-year time, timeframe. Five years should be able to give all of us an opportunity to look at the impacts on future spending, not just the immediate hits that we see from our actions. The last item that I wanted to hit is, and was my first instruction to the COG staff, which is that we are a service organization and we are here to provide services to our municipalities. Therefore, as we approached the budget hearings, they were all instructed not to sell anything. It is not the COG's job or position that we should be dictating your municipal budgets. Instead, your municipal budgets drive what we do. Therefore, we are not going to sell you anything. Everything that comes through in this budget comes from a request that was made of the COG in one form or another, whether it is a new service or whether we are just needing a new piece of equipment to continue an old service. We are only trying to do the things that have been asked of us by our municipal partners. And the staff will not be leading or asking for any new and great things that do not come from our municipal partners. I don't believe that this was a big issue in the past, but this is very much a messaging issue that has been lost with time, that the COG is not the driver. We are the service organization for all of you, and we will be there to serve your needs. At this point, we have to take any questions that you might have.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board at this time? And because Larry and myself were present at all the meetings for finance. No, Larry has a statement.
So first of all, I want to say it was only eight hours.
It said that were at least eight hours. It said at least eight hours. That's the minimum.
But one thing I want to let our board know is that the increase that we are going to have is 6.41%, which is reasonable, given the, like the light increase, I think you said, 5.8, right?
The.
5.64.
5.64 is the overall increase.
6.4. One is not out of the, out of range, especially since we added, we added some things to the budget that are additional head counts and such. So I wanted the, the board to know that. And I wanted Kimberly and Ben to know that, and I, I want to make this known, and I've made this known in the Finance Committee meeting, that this year's budget meeting was light years ahead of what we had in, in the past few years. I commend you on all the work you did. I think it was, it, it's very difficult, it's a hard budget to do. If anybody's seen the detailed budget book, it's, it's pretty thick. There's a lot of work there. You guys worked very hard and did an excellent job. And I just want everybody to know, because last year I was very vocal the other way. You weren't here, Ben, but Kimberly was. I was very vocal in the fact that the, the budget, the budget process for the COG was, it was getting better since it came in, but before that, it was, it was, some of the numbers that were coming out were, were, were crazy, you know, 16% and above increases, and we could never have absorbed that as a, as a municipal manager, a former municipal manager yourself, you know, there's, there's an organic growth in our township and 16% is just, was, was way too much.
Certainly.
For us to handle 6.4%, much more manageable. So I, I appreciate that. And finally, I would say that I really don't have any comments on the, comments from me, the Finance Director, on, on the budget. I think the budget is fine the way it is. I'll leave it up to the board.
Betsy, Supervisor Whitman, and then Supervisor Abrams.
Oh, yeah, just a quick question. If you could explain the difference between the 6.41 increase for us and the 5.64 for COG? I must have missed that in the presentation.
Okay, so what we do is we come up with a percentage increase to keep everything status quo.
But it's not called a cap.
It's not called a cap, it's called a target. Okay? So the target is set, since COG has, you know, substantially, substantial amount of labor, you know?
Yeah, for sure.
Agree. So we know what the COLA rate's going to be, we know what the merit rate's going to be, and as long as we know what healthcare's going to be, then we know that 60%, 65% of the budget to maintain the people that we have is going to go up because of those numbers. So we, we do a calculation that Rich Frank from College Township, who's the Chair of the Finance Committee, has developed, which I agree with 100% with this calculation. And that calculation gets us to a target number if we were going to keep the COG exactly the same, not add any programs, not add any employees, not, not change any, you know, add any equipment, okay? So we start from there, then we build on that. Then we build on what does Parks and Rec want to add to their budget? And when those things get added, it's obviously going to creep up that number.
For sure.
So it's, it, it went from that 5.6 to our 6.4.
So when you say our 6.4, that's all municipalities?
No, that's.
Oh, that's 1%?
That's Patton Township's, they need 6.4%. Okay. Increase based on the formulas, because the formulas vary from year to year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the other portion of that is the funding.
Some municipalities will be lower than 6.4, some will be higher than 6.4.
Yeah. It, it comes down to the funding formula each year is going to differ based on your EIT collections, your overall property value, total population, et cetera. So if you increase some, then you increase your overall percentage of that formula compared to the prior year.
Right. And then the library and the people who go to the library, it goes up and down based on the patronage.
Yeah. So I want, I just want to make a couple of comments from a watch, was able to watch part of the last reel of the movie, The Budget, The Budget. And I want to say with this, the whole concept of the employer burden was a new concept for me, or actually having it explained the way it was. And I think that's critical for everyone to know, and the fact that it used to be really a much smaller percentage, like 125% now it's.
We discussed that. It is in our financial trends monitor.
Yeah, okay.
That I address what I call benefits, which is the burden.
Yeah.
Okay? And ours is up over 50%. Tireer in the police department than it is in the non-uniform, because the police department's pension is a lot more expensive. So back when I started, when the dinosaurs roamed the Earth, that number was 20%, less than 20%. Today, it's over 50.
But, but in some cases, it could be 100%.
In some cases, it depends on the employee's wage and their benefits.
Yeah.
So I think I said this in that meeting, if an employee is making $35,000 a year and is on family coverage, their healthcare is $35,000 a year. So just their healthcare is 100%. That doesn't count all the other things. In our case, that. In our case, dental, eye, workers' comp, employer's portion of Social Security and Medicare. All those things get added to it. So yes, it depends on the employee's wage as to how high their burden is.
Yeah, yeah. The other comment I want to make is, so right at the opening, and I think, I'm trying to think who has, it might have been Matt, not Matt Heller, who's on there, but Matt Herndon, who asked about why the increase in, or, you know, why the CCMPO wasn't meeting its deadline. And I thought that was handled very well. It was a question I was on the verge of asking at one of our general forum meetings. And it seemed like a sensitive question. It was asked very directly, was answered very directly, and very nuanced or very complex. So kudos to Jim Saylor and what he's done with the turnover of staff recently. Not just himself, but what, 80% of the people on, working on CCMPO. So I really did appreciate that. And I, especially in, in light of the increase in funds that we had with the power purchase agreement and the way that was handled by sort of, I think, I hope a one-off in the public. But I, I really appreciate the effort that you put into that and answering that, so. And Jim did a great job, so just wanted to add that.
Okay, Supervisor Abrams?
Just want to make two points. One is that one dinosaur is not extinct, and that's the thesaurus. And second, that prediction is hazardous when it relates to the future.
My comment is that I would like to thank Ben and especially Kimberly and her staff. You made the finance budget so much that all of us could understand it, you know? And you answered each and every question and the questions that you had to get back to us. You were able to do that. And I just want you to know how we truly appreciate it. You taking that extra time to make sure all of us that was on the committee, the Finance Committee, and especially the Executive Board. I went through this three times. So I can tell you, going through each time we did this budget, it was just an opportunity to see how hard all of your staff have worked and especially you. So thank you, thank you and Ben for coming into this. Especially Ben being new and getting hit, you know?
Kimberly's already done the work.
And running with it and helping and assisting Kimberly. Kimberly, you came in and straightened so much out that we owe you. We definitely owe you to say thank you and we appreciate all that you've done and your staff. And I also have to thank Larry Pager for attending all of the Finance Committee meetings with myself. To the hours, and I want everyone to know, this was days of this. Not just a couple of hours. This was days and hours of this to make sure we got it right. And I think Larry, I think we did.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you for taking the time out, coming tonight and, you know, letting the board hear what we've all known, the hard work that you've done to make sure, you know, we move forward on this.
Thank you.
So any other questions for Ben?
Sounds like you don't have any comments to send back on the budget?
Not yet.
That you're supportive of it?
Yes.
Perfect, I will, that makes my job easier, I'll get those back.
And thank you.
And that is, that is a first, that we haven't had any comments.
Thank you.
Supervisor Whitman?
I just apologize, since I've been out of town for a couple of weeks. So, but we have until the 24th to get comments, do you?
Yes.
Yes.
So I'm still, have some things to go over and I apologize, I didn't do it tonight, so.
And I think too, Kimberly, the way that we, I think educated everybody of how the budget is built up from the CIP to the program plan to the budget. That helped because we had comments in the CIP, we had comments in the program plan. Those get all resolved, so by the time you get to the budget, you really should be limited in comments.
Yeah.
Should anyone come up with any additional comments afterwards, please feel free to email or call and we are happy to, to answer, even after the process is over.
Okay.
Okay.
Ben, thank you.
Thank you all so much.
And have a good evening.
Thank you, Ben, enjoy your evening, enjoy your evening, Kimberly.
All right, next on the agenda is our Public Safety, the monthly report. Chief Jolly, you're up.
All right, thank you very much. We had a pretty busy month, in the month of September in the Police Department. You'll note that we did, we stopped 250 vehicles, wrote 38 traffic citations, three parking tickets, handled 31 criminal arrests. Still were able to get some bike patrol in while the weather's still holding out for us here. They rode 17 miles, did 31 business checks, handled one incident, wrote a parking ticket and did a vacation home check. Under department notes, there was a 26-year-old male who was arrested for simple assault and harassment. And those charges stem from a domestic dispute. A 29-year-old female was arrested and charged for possession of a small amount of marijuana and arrest prior to requisition. The female was stopped on a traffic stop because her registration was showing suspended. And she had an active felony warrant out of the state of Nevada. So as she was taken into custody on that warrant, the marijuana was found on her person as well. A 44-year-old female was arrested for public drunkenness and disorderly conduct. She was intoxicated and passed out inside a bus shelter in the township. She was uncooperative with the officers when they woke her up. So EMS was summoned and she was transported to the hospital for further treatment. 13 arrests were made for retail theft, nine for driving under the influence. We served five warrants of the six that we attempted and our officers conducted 13 vacation home checks. We did have to use force during one incident in the month of September. Our officers were dispatched to a domestic dispute between a male and a female and the female there was experiencing a manic episode. The officers arrived and verbally de-escalated the situation very well. However, the male half of that decided that he was going to collect some of his belongings and leave, which was fine. Unfortunately though, that upset the female half. So she started making some comments to the officers about harming herself. And at one point, she lunged and grabbed a bottle of pills that were on the table and she began to ingest the pills that were in the bottle. So our officers had to physically restrain her, grabbed her arms, took her to the ground and then verbally commanded her to spit out the pills, which she eventually did. She was handcuffed. The officers were able to get her calmed down and then she was transported to the hospital for further treatment as well. Under Community Relations, Officer Tuskovich had a very busy month. He and I did a lockdown drill with the staff and students at Park Forest Middle School. He participated in a community festival at the Park Forest Baptist Church. He presented his yearly safety presentation to the staff at Graysew Woods Elementary. Then he also spoke with the kindergarten class at Park Forest Elementary about safety and the role that police officers play in the community and also assisted them with doing a statehood drill. Sergeant Albright provided a police presence for a 5K run along Circleville Road. Officer Brooks did a walk-through of the center during a large wrestling tournament they were hosting there. And then Officer Tuskovich, Sergeant Shaffer, Officer Snyder and Graff, Officer Brooks and I all worked the 22nd Annual Patent Township Children's Safety Fair. We had a fantastic, beautiful weather. It was a great, great day. We had a fantastic turnout. So just a huge shout-out to all the other first responders who provided staff to come that day. And then also the Happy Valley Business Association for their ongoing support of our event. We really couldn't do it without them. Also to, I would just want to thank real quickly Loana Moore for her assistance. She comes and always helps us that day. And then I just wanted to make sure we spotlight Officer Tuskovich again for all the hard work he puts into this. A lot of organization, a lot of promoting that he does, so he does a really, really nice job of that, so. Great community event and we're looking forward to the 23rd next year. So we were really pleased with how everything turned out this year, though. Officer Snyder and Graff, again, were at the Safety Fair. They also went to the Community Festival at the Park Forest Baptist Church. And then they came in and did a presentation at the Criminal Justice Advisory Board meeting. Under Training and Department Activities, our officers attended tactical response team training. Sergeant Shaffer also attended a tactical team conference in Virginia. Officer Brachowski attended a traffic patrol drug interdiction training. Detective Federinko, Officer Finocchio and Officer Snyder attended a narcotics enforcement training. And then all of our officers attended firearms training at the Fisherman's Paradise Range. Officer Snyder and Canine Graff did their two required training days. But in addition to their required training, they were contacted by the State Police to conduct a sniff on a traffic stop where they had reasonable suspicion that drugs were present. Graff alerted on that vehicle. The following day, PSP obtained a search warrant for that vehicle and recovered 16 grams of cocaine and 10 grams of methamphetamine. He also was called in to do a sniff on a traffic stop in Patent Township for our agency. Again, Graff alerted on the vehicle. We secured a search warrant and three grams of an unknown substance was located in that vehicle. Subsequently, has been sent away to the PSP lab to be identified, to find out exactly what we're dealing with there. I attended the Humane Society Police Officer Meeting, kickoff for the Citizens Police Academy, the Children's Advocacy Center Advisory Committee Meeting, Criminal Justice Advisory Board Meeting, CCU Meeting, and then also the Center County Chiefs Meeting. Sergeant Chapanko and I also attended an award presentation at the Crisis Intervention Team Symposium, where Tracy Small, if you don't know her, she's a fantastic individual, was presented with a plaque for being the CIT Coordinator of the Year. And just a little bit of background, so in Center County, we started our Crisis Intervention Team in 2010. And since that time, so coming up on 14 years here, close to 500 individuals have been trained in Crisis Intervention Team. So we've modeled ours after kind of the birthplace in Memphis for CIT. And we have a fantastic program. Probably 95% of our officers are trained here. And Tracy Small does a fantastic job as our coordinator. So we're very blessed to have her and lucky to have her. We had a performance report for Officer Snyder and for Officer Adalini. In early September, the State College Police received a call about an unknown male who showed up at a party and was threatening attendees with a rifle. The male then fled. And a minimal description of the male and his vehicle was broadcast to other departments. Actually, it was the following night, so the next shift, Officer Snyder was handling a disorderly conduct call at one of the residences in Patent Township and observed what he thought was the suspect vehicle leaving the area. He was on foot, so he was able to gather some information, the registration for the vehicle, as it, as it left the scene and was able to alert other officers that the suspect might be in the area. Shortly thereafter, Officer Adalini observed the same vehicle on North Atherton Street and observed it commit several traffic violations. He stopped the vehicle and would subsequently arrest the operator for driving under the influence. In the meantime, though, he got consent to search the vehicle and located the replica rifle that was in the trunk of the vehicle. And it matched the description of the rifle that the victims of the State College incident had mentioned. So that information was provided to the State College Police Department for them to complete their investigation. So, but it was due to the excellent patrol tactics of Officer Snyder and Officer Adalini that a suspect in a serious crime was identified and important evidence was recovered. So they did a really, really nice job on that, that incident. The sideways picture that's up on the board right now is of Tracy, yeah, there we go, of Tracy Small in the middle, holding the plaque. So like I said, if you've never met her, fantastic person and a great resource we have here in the community. And that is just about every criminal justice agency in Center County is there to support her. So she was very surprised that we all, we all showed up for her at that training. I was here in State College and we all wanted to make sure we showed her our support and for all the hard work that she does.
That's great.
The next photo, so this is like I spoke about, the traffic stop that the State Police had called us. That is the 16 grams of cocaine and 10 grams of methamphetamine that was located after Graff had hit on that vehicle. And then we just have a couple of notes. One, just thanking our officers basically for the general day-to-day things that they do. And then we had one that was directed more towards Sergeant Albright for a, some parents who came up, their parents are Bowling Green student who is in the band. And when they arrived in State College, their car broke down. So Sergeant Albright was able to help them and make sure that they could get to the game on time and not miss their, their son or daughter performing with the band. Lastly, we just have our record list of calls for service. In the month of September, we had 554. And that's up quite a bit from the 432 that we handled in August. But that mainly can be attributed to school being back in session. So our officers did almost 100 school checks and handled 59 traffic incidents. So that completes my report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for Chief from the board? Chief, continue to thank your officer for outstanding work and the representation for Patent Township. We continue to say we have outstanding officers. And under your leadership, we truly appreciate everything that they do.
Thank you, yep.
I do have, Madam Chair, I have one quick question.
Okay.
Do you have a date for the 2025 Children's Safety Fair?
We have not decided yet. We, we kicked around a little bit about doing it in the spring.
Oh.
We, we compete with so many other great events in the fall. And unfortunately, it's around Penn State football, right? So whenever it's an away game or if they're off, there's so many community events that, that are held. So we've talked about maybe trying to do it in May, but we're not 100% sure yet. So, but as soon as we have something, I will make sure I relay that information to you.
Don't do it the first Saturday in May, okay?
I will try to avoid that.
I've missed several. My daughter won't be getting married again. That was, that was a good excuse. Thank you.
Yep.
I love that, with Ben.
All right, next on the agenda is Public Works and Public Works Facility Assessment. Amy?
So we recently sent out an RFP to qualified firms to complete a facility analysis and space needs assessment for our Public Works facility. As you know, our Public Works facility is located up the hill behind our current facility. And we're rapidly starting to run out of space up there. And as we're taking on more roads and looking eventually to have to hire more crew members, we need to look at if we have enough space available. So we asked these consultants to give us a proposal to do just that. So we received three proposals from Hoffman Leaky Architects, Fernsler Hutchinson and Kimble Bogrett. We had the proposals reviewed by a team on our staff here that included myself, Ken, our Director of Public Works Operations, and our three Public Works crew leaders. And I wanted to involve them because that's ultimately going to be their facility. So I want to make sure that their needs are being met through the process. Following the review and an interview with two of the firms, the team recommends that the board move forward with hiring Kimble Bogrett to complete the assessment. Kimble Bogrett is located in Blue Bell, Pennsylvania. They've worked on more than 100 municipal projects across the state, which includes over 100 new and renovated municipal buildings. Their firm mission is to create extraordinary solutions for ordinary budgets, which really resonated with us. They also showed us a list of all of their projects. And almost every single project, they came in under budget and without change orders, which is a big deal with a capital project like that. They were also recently hired by the COG to complete the COG's facility study. So we would recommend that we move forward with hiring Kimble Bogrett at a cost of $18,900. This cost will be a little bit higher because it doesn't include travel and some other reimbursable expenses.
And does it nine?
Amy, what was that number, 18?
$18,900.
And 9,000 of that comes back?
Yes, if we, so.
If we go with them.
And I should make mention, this is the first step in a long-range process for some planning, right? We're not going to do this and then suddenly go build something tomorrow. We're going to do this process to identify what our needs are in terms of a space for our facility and then hopefully move forward with doing design and buying some land if we need to determine we're out of space, which I think we are, and then move forward. But again, that's a long-range project. That's not something that's going to happen now.
Okay, any questions from the board at this time? If not, can I get a motion?
Certainly.
Okay, I want to give a thing to hire Kimble Bogrett. Can I get a second?
Oh, second.
Discussion, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, any abstention? The motion passes to hire Kimble Bogett. The motion passes to hire Kimball Bogett to complete the public works facility assessment. Next on the agenda is engineering, planning, and zoning. The Holsinger Lot Consolidation Plan, 5008 Buffalo Road Run Road. And Jenna?
Yep, Jenna's going to take that.
All right, Jenna.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. All right. So Steve Norfolk, on behalf of his client, has submitted the Holsinger Lot Consolidation Plan at 5058 Buffalo Run Road. There are three parcels all owned by the Holsingers in this location. There's a map included in your agenda as well. So the applicant is proposing to consolidate these three lots into one lot, all owned by the same property owner. It's currently zoned low-density residence district. Included with the plan submission is a request for a planning waiver and non-building declaration. So these, this module is essentially used by applicants proposing subdivisions that aren't creating new structures that will generate sewage, which is an appropriate use of this type of module. Staff finds that the plan meets all township regulations with conditions as outlined in the memorandum dated July 17, 2024. Planning Commission also reviewed this at their September meeting and recommended approval.
Okay, is that it, Jenna?
That is everything.
Okay. Are there any questions from the board at this time?
No.
Is saying none? Can I get a motion to approve the Holsinger Lot Consolidation subject to all conditions being satisfied?
Self-move.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes to approve the Holsinger Lot Consolidation Plan subject to all conditions being satisfied. All right. Next on the agenda, Jenna, thank you so much. All right. Next on the agenda is short-term rental housing resiliations. Amy, is that you?
Yeah, I'll start on this and then Jenna's also on and she's sort of the expert on all of this. And she did prepare some information, which is at your place tonight, about short-term rental regulations.
Right.
So we're starting to see, and I think a couple of you have gotten these complaints in addition to township staff, an uptick in complaints associated with short-term rental properties. The complaints generally center around properties that aren't used as a primary residence. So someone's coming in, buying the property, they don't live here, they come up for a couple of football games a year and then they rent out the property the rest of the year. So given how fast the short-term rental market has grown, I mean, I did look back and I think in 2012, the board had discussed, and I remember this was a discussion at the regional level, should we do something about short-term rentals? And at the time, everybody said, well, it's maybe a little too soon. So college township, I think at that time, is the only one that moved forward. But now that things are really moving fast with the short-term rental market and the state has been reluctant to do any kind of regulation on short-term rentals, I think, Pam, you remember hearing that in our meeting with Senator Langerhold. We would recommend that the townships start exploring what, if any, short-term rental regulations might make sense for the township. College Township and Ferguson and State College all have varying kinds of regulations. So that could be a starting point in our exploration. Jenna's memo that she put together really does a good job of defining sort of the best practices and why we would want to look at this and also mentions the regulations in the other agencies. So what we're looking for tonight is just an agreement with the board that you want to move forward with this. And then Jenna and myself can run with the Planning Commission on this and come back with a recommendation.
Okay. What is the board's pleasure? You have any questions for Jenna and Amy at this time?
Great.
Okay. Move forward?
Yeah.
Is everybody in agreement? Amy to move forward on this.
Yeah, thank you for that, Jenna.
Thank you, Jenna, and thank you, Amy. Next on the agenda is the Oak Wilt Program. Amy, I think this is you?
Yes, it is me. And then Ken can pitch in as needed to administer this program. So back in 2004, the township adopted oak wilt regulations. And at that time, oak wilt was a new disease that was causing issues within the trees in park forest. And I looked back at the minutes from August and September of 2004. And at that time, there was very real concern, and Elliot, you might have been on the board then, you might remember this, there was very real concern that the disease would spread and would kill all of the trees within park forest, which obviously would be a huge loss. And the majority of the infected trees were also located on private property. So at the time, the board agreed to adopt regulations and to also fund an oak wilt program for the treatment and removal of diseased trees on private property. The program was funded with $75,000 of township monies, and the money was to be used to treat the first 50 trees on a property. And I will note that Tom Kurtz, who was the manager at the time, is quoted in the minutes as saying this could become an open-ended expense. And over the last 20 years, that's exactly what this has become. We added this into our tree ordinance, which at the time, our tree ordinance only dealt with Dutch elm disease. And the oak wilt regulations that were added to the ordinance required residents to remove infected trees at their own expense upon notification from the township. And then failure to treat or remove the trees would result in the township having the work completed and the resident being billed. The ordinance was amended in 2019 to add regulations aimed at stopping the possible spread of oak wilt disease. Those regulations prohibit pruning between April 1st and October 31st without sealing the cuts with a commercial tree paint or wound dressing. Also prohibits climbing oak trees with boot spurs or spikes unless the tree is being removed. So I'll note that since 2004, the ordinance regulations have not been applied as written. So what I mean by that is since 2004, when this program started, Ken and now Nicole would get a phone call saying, I think there's an oak wilt case. We would go out, have the sample tested, and then the township would actually remove the trees or treat the trees. So to date, we've spent $304,034 on the program since 2004. And that's not a consistent number. It's not like we've spent, you know, $18,000 a year for 20 years. That fluctuates as the disease fluctuates in the township. We've seen definitely a decline in the oak wilt cases over the 20 years, but it's really hard to say if it's because of the program or it's because there's greater awareness of what oak wilt is. We've also seen an uptick in other tree diseases. Emerald ashbore is a good example. Elm yellow is another one. I believe there's a hemlock disease as well and some that are affecting maples. So these are also diseases that we're not actively treating or regulating in any manner. So I kind of, after the, you know, first year and a half that I've been in office in the township, I wanted to take a step back and look at this program objectively and see what we might be able to do because it is a lot of money. And I'm not sure the township really should be doing work on people's private property, right? That gives a little bit of pause. So I wanted to see if we could maybe reevaluate and move forward in a different direction. And we did get, and I shared the two emails that we got from residents, and I think they're spot on with their comments. But to look at suspending paying for treatment and removal of infected trees for two years starting in 2025. So we can pilot this pause, right, suspension? And we can then monitor the oak wilt cases over the next two years. If we're starting to see an increase in the oak wilt cases, then the board can have another discussion about should we start the program up again the way it was and have the township pay? I also think we really need to create a public education campaign to go out to not only our residents, but also, as Mr. Feinberg had noted in his email, to the landscape contractors. Because there are landscape contractors that are very much, you know, certified arbers, they know not to do this. And then there are some that are not. And they're cutting trees during that non-pruning time. They're not sealing cuts, things that need to be stopped. So we need to work on some kind of an education campaign that residents need to know, they need to let us know if that's happening, and these landscape contractors need to know the regulations. And then lastly, to go back to applying the ordinance as it's written, so that we would no longer pay to remove someone's trees off their private property. And I understand, and Mr. Rossman in his email made the case about there's a lot of trees and it's a financial hardship on someone's personal property. I think the township could consider creating a financial hardship means for people to come in and get some financial assistance from the township if they have a significant amount of oak trees that they can't fund all of it. That's something we could put some parameters together for that. And then another thing Mr. Rossman, I think, brought up in his email, which I think is appropriate, was again about there's just a ton of education around trees that isn't being done. So in my previous municipality, we actually had a shade tree commission. Shade Tree Commission is five members. It's set up by the Board of Supervisors. It's an ordinance that you pass. And in that municipality, we had a significant amount of 200-plus-year-old trees. And they dealt with, you deal with all the street trees, you deal with any diseases that come out. But they also did a pretty significant public education push, especially like around the Emerald Ashbore when that came out. So there would be some benefit if you wanted to consider something like that. It's not something that would happen, you know, tomorrow, but it's something we could work on in 2025 if that's something you're interested in. I just think, and it's funny, I was joking with someone today, I came over here and I thought, oh goodness, we don't have a shade tree commission anymore. I won't have to worry about as many trees as I had to. And we worry about more trees in Patton Township, which is not a bad thing. Trees are very important. But I would just like to maybe migrate into a different direction with oak wilt, since I think a lot of what we were worried about in 2004 has not come to fruition. And there's other things that are threatening the trees in our neighborhoods now that isn't just oak wilt.
Any comments, Amy Supervisor Abrams?
I guess we're sick of more problems.
That was good, Elliot.
I really like the, and first of all, I want to thank Mr. Rossman and Mr. Feinberg for their comments and others who have sent in suggestions and for their comments. I am all for the tree commission. And I would like to extend that it not be just five, but maybe seven.
I think we're limited by the Pennsylvania Township, Second Class Township Code.
Okay, that it's five?
But we could have alternates. I think that's what they did.
Okay, then I would like to put that in. Education is the key to all of this. And ask for all of us to learn more about, you know, the disease on the trees and how we can get the word out to our community. And for those who are falling on a hardship and cannot have tree removal if it is on their property. Ken, do you have any comment on?
I think it's probably, as Amy had stated, the ordinance hadn't been applied, but staff did follow through as directed by the supervisors at that time. Because in the meeting room, initially, the supervisors had came out and said that we're going to have everybody take care of their own trees. And there were three people in the audience. The next meeting, there were approximately 34 people in the audience and their voice was loud and the supervisors heard that. So I think that was how it had went to that direction. So, and I do agree with Amy that we do have multiple diseases now. You know, we have a lot of, you know, the hemlock woolly adelja, we have oak decline, which is another disease affecting the oak trees, which park forest is, you know, a large amount of oak trees. So oak wilt isn't the only disease affecting the oak trees that we have. So there are multiple things that we're dealing with at this time where homeowners are dealing with. So, yeah, it'll be interesting to see, you know, where we go from here. I mean, unfortunately, things like elm yellows and the Emerald Ashbore, they basically just wiped out all of those trees. So it made it pretty simple. There was nothing to deal with except firewood after that.
What was the first one you said besides Emerald Ashbore?
No, I've heard Emerald Ashbore was the first one.
Hemlock.
Hemlock. Oh, hemlock, adelga, yeah.
So.
Adelga, yeah.
And Amy, can we also reach out to Penn State?
Yes.
For their experts that work with that. And just the educational piece for community and, you know, some of the experts that are out there.
So I will say, if we go the route, and I think it would be a good route, of creating a shade tree commission, there's a regional shade tree commission group that meets. And it's organized through State College, Penn State Comes, Bellefonte Borough, Ferguson Township, Harris Township, anybody that has a shade tree commission.
Okay.
And they talk about tree-related issues. They talk about, like, one of the things the shade tree commissions do elsewhere is they also plant street trees every year, right? And then they review street tree plans and things. So there was a push one year to do a joint contract to buy trees to save money on the trees, because trees are obviously expensive to source. But, so having a shade tree commission would help us tap into that resource. Which is phenomenal because there's so much knowledge within that room generally when they meet. And also, it's a good, I'll put a plug for any members of the public that might be listening, if someone who is interested in trees is a botany background or a landscape background, those are the kind of people that you want to tap into this commission because it's a very specific knowledge base.
Okay. So there's two questions.
Got a couple of questions before. How is the oak wilt treated? Are there regulations at the state or federal level, the same way that there were, and also with the Emerald Ashbore, there weren't any necessarily regulations? But because it had such a high impact on agriculture, there's a lot of publicity about it?
Yeah, there's been a lot of publicity about most of the different diseases, but I don't believe there's too much regulation directing, you know, how to treat or prevent that. I mean, unfortunately, the Emerald Ashbore moved so fast that the regulations just weren't fast enough to catch up to it. And elm yellows really was just about the same. I mean, you know, a contractor that worked for the power company said that he never had a chemical that reacted and took care of the tree as fast as elm yellows did. You know, it basically, the bark was falling off the tree within eight months.
And you're, you know, a couple hundred years ago, we had the Chesnut.
Yeah.
Light that came in. So we have no more above a certain size. Well, maybe one or two, yeah. So maybe, we can do what we can do. We can slow it down, but I love the shade tree commission idea. So enough? Thank you.
Then can I get a motion to implement the proposed change in oak wilt program?
And move that we branch into the idea of the shade tree commission.
Where change. All right, second discussion. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes to implement the proposed changes to the oak wilt program. All right. Next on the agenda is administration. There are no items. Next is the consent agenda. Is there any item or items on the consent agenda that needs to be discussed? If not, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. The consent agenda is approved. Next on the agenda is the management report. And Amy, you're on.
So I will just highlight a couple of things. First of all, following our conversation last time about pursuing the attainable housing regulations, I met with Jenna and Summer from the Planning Office, Missy Spoonover from the Center County Housing and Land Trust, and Stephanie from Habitat for Humanity. And we started working on a community engagement plan for that because we want to move forward in a deliberate manner so that residents know what's happening and that they can be a part of the conversation. So I want to thank Supervisor Abrams because I think he led the charge on that at the last meeting. And we really have put together, I think, a good plan that we'll start implementing. I will also note, we do need two library board representatives. So if you know anyone who might be interested, the library board is a unique position and I think a good position. But if you know anyone who might be interested, please have them reach out to me and I can get the application over to them to apply. And then lastly, the Toff Trees West Stormwater Basin, Ken, correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't had any more sinkholes out there.
No, it's actually been holding water for, I'm going to say approximately 14 days.
And the developer just sent an email to me this evening that they've notified, they've found a third-party company to come in and review the work and the plans for that basin to make sure that we've done what we need to do out there. So we'll move forward with that. And we're grateful that the developer has finally located someone. And with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Amy, on the library board representatives, did they give you any, could that be anybody?
It could be anybody, but they typically like somebody who has some kind of maybe a fundraising background, because they do do a significant amount of fundraising. Also, anybody who might have had a background serving on a library. Also, anybody who might have had a background serving on a library board before would be good as well. It is a little unique in that the stuff they deal with is slightly different than the other commissions that we have.
Good. All right. Any other questions for Amy at this time? Seeing none. Next on the agenda is the committee reports. Any committee reports? I know most of our committees were canceled due to the conference that we just met. A lot of us were in attendance, so if anybody else have any committee reports? Seeing none, other business. Before I adjourn, I would first like to thank Vice Chair Supervisor McGruder for representing Patton Township at our voting PML summit. I know you did a superb job and would like to thank him, and also for our board members that attended the summit and our staff. So Susan Betsy, Larry, Amy, thank you. I think we were well represented, learned a lot, and look forward to the next summit. Anyone else would like to say anything about their summit visit? And our summit visit was in Scranton, PA, so we would also like to thank them for hosting us at that event. Next on the agenda is adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
I want to thank everyone, and this meeting is now adjourned.